Pray with me. Father, this morning, your holiness is our great confidence and it's also our joy. God, you created all that there is and you're sovereign and providential over it. Father, we've come today to pray for both the institution and individuals that you've created. Father, for this court, we thank you for it and we pray your favor and blessing on it and that your will be accomplished through it in the business of the county and all who have business here today. Father, we pray for the individuals. We pray with gratitude and joy for our judges, for our commissioners. We pray, God, that you would bless them, that you would lead and guide them in all that they do. We pray your blessings on their family. Father, we praise you and thank you for Mr. Thomas's improvements. We pray your continued blessing and favor on his healing. Father, we are mindful today of your purpose for law enforcement and we pray for them and we ask, God, your protection as they serve you and serve us in the capacity you've created that institution for. So, Father, today with joy and gratitude and gladness, we praise you and thank you in Jesus' good name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one safe, under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Romans, thank you, sir. All right. Well, again, I'd like to welcome you all to Commissioners Court. We appreciate you being here today. The time is officially 9:02. We will call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum and we have Commissioner Richardson participating electronically. First item up is the citizens' comments and we do have two today during the item. Both wish to speak once the item is called, so we will wait for those. So, item number one is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on November 3rd of 2020. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the meetings as presented?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the regular session Commissioner Court meeting on November 3rd, 2020, as presented.
I'll second, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Thomas to approve the minutes of the November 3rd meeting of Commissioners Court as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you. Item two, consider and take action on designation of a professional administration service provider for the 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Fund application and project implementation administered by the Texas Department of Agriculture. Gentlemen, you'll remember, we had this item on the agenda last week and we promised to bring it back this week, so Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Judge, you're correct. We did discuss it and now we'd like to take action today, if possible, for the designation of professional administrative service for the Crescent Heights water supply. And today, we have the manager, Ms. Carla Thorpe. If anybody's got any questions for Carla, can I explain how we, that works for the county? We've done it before. We think it's a good thing to support our little water systems. And in this case, we do have a company we'd like to recommend.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? Any comments? All right. And what we're doing here is we are approving the administration services, correct?
Exactly.
And this is the requirement of any type of, especially with these grants, part of that function. And that is GrantWorks, I believe, is who is named. And we do have a representative here today, Mr. Payne. Are there any further questions or comments at this time? Gentlemen, we need a motion with the judge's authorization to sign.
Well, I'd like to make that motion that we take action to appoint GrantWorks for the professional services, administrative services for Crescent Heights for the 2021, I mean, 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Fund application and project implementation, administration by the Texas Department of Agriculture, with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Thule to award GrantWorks the contract to provide the administrative services for the grant process for the Crescent Heights water service. Any further comments with the judge's authorization to sign? Any further comments? All those in favor? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you, and we appreciate your patience. All right. Item three, consider and take action to appoint Michael Cates and Cotton Walker to the Emergency Service District Number 10 Board of Directors for a term which will expire December 31 of 2022. Commissioner Thule?
Yes, Judge. So, Robert Russ Sr. and Kirby Hardy have not wished to be reappointed to the ESD Number 10. We want to thank them for their services over the past years to this board and continuing the good work that they do there. We, the President, Thomas Fraser, and I have reached out to two individuals and they have graciously said that they would serve on this board, which is Michael Cates to fill Robert Russ Sr.'s position and Cotton Walker to fill Kirby Hardy's position. And those terms will start on January 1st of 2021 and expire on December 31st of 2022.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Michael Cates to fill Robert Russ Sr.'s position and Cotton Walker to fill Kirby Hardy's position to the ESD 10 Board of Directors for a term which to expire December 31st, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the appointment of Michael Cates and Cotton Walker to the Emergency Service District Number 10 Board of Directors for a term which will expire December 31, 2022. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Item number four, excuse me, consider and take action to reappoint Thomas Fraser to the Emergency Service District Number 10 Board of Directors for a term which will expire December 31 of 2022. Commissioner Thule?
Yes, Judge. Thomas Fraser has asked to be reappointed to this ESD 10 Board of Directors and his term will conclude in December 31st of 2022.
Questions for the Commissioner? I would like to add as a comment, the service that these individuals provide for the county and for us is done without pay and they volunteer their time and their efforts and energies to ensure that these boards that help fund our fire service, that they continue to function and meet all the requirements. And we appreciate all of our ESD board members, which has us, what, at about 50? I believe that's correct. 50 of them. And the county is not completely covered yet with ESD, so there are quite a few individuals and it does get difficult at times to find folks, so we appreciate their efforts greatly. So, any other comments? Entertain a motion.
Judge, I move we reappoint Thomas Fraser to the ESD Number 10 Board of Directors for a term to expire December 31st, 2022.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Thomas to approve the reappointment of Thomas Fraser to the Emergency Service District Number 10 Board of Directors for a term which will expire December 31, 2022. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. And it is, we've got five minutes before we can hold our public hearing, so we will move to item eight, which is receive financial reports. And we have the combined financials for all of our JPs, JP 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. This is for the month of October. Are there any questions or comments on them? So I'll be sure and mark my place. Okay. Item nine, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets, which we have none of those today. And item 10 is consider and take action on submitted contracts. And we do have one contract today that is involving Tyler Technologies. It's an ENCODE product that affects directly with the Sheriff's Department and through IT. So, Sheriff Josh, if y'all would?
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
Basically, with this new product, unfortunately, I know we all went to Odyssey and all the courts and everything, everybody got on the same, same computer program. We've been working with Tyler Technology for approximately 18 months now. There is a, the Uniform Crime Report that we have to submit to the FBI every year. They're basically doing away with that and replacing it with a system called NIBRIS. And basically, Odyssey has been unsuccessful at getting us to the point to where we can report to NIBRIS. We've only got till January 1st to be compliant with NIBRIS or we lose state and federal funding. So, we're kind of in a bind and so we're moving forward. We want to move forward with ENCODE Public Safety, which is a branch of Tyler Technologies. And they're already NIBRIS compliant, so if we can get this contract signed, get it up and going, then we will be in compliance and we don't risk the state and federal funding aspects that are out there. I don't like it, but I don't think at this opportunity, at this particular time, we have any other option.
So, one-year contract at $51,000, is that right?
Actually, this contract is supposed to be.
No charge?
This is actually an addendum.
Okay.
To the contract that we enacted two weeks ago, I believe, with Tyler Technologies with Odyssey. It is at no charge to the county.
I got you.
And the IT committee did review this and went about an hour and a half at our last meeting with representatives from ENCODE and the Odyssey side of Tyler Technologies and aired our grievances because of this program not being fully integrated. It is interfaced, which means that it will push one way. It's just, and I'll let our IT director, Mr. Brock, go into some of that a little more, explaining the difference of it.
So, basically, the sheriff is correct. The product that we're looking at is already in our possession. We use it for CAD. And so CAD and what we call RMS, Records Management System, is all tied together in that product. We chose to go from CAD directly into Odyssey, one-way push. And what happens now is that goes into the law enforcement package, goes into the jailing package. So what's going to happen at this point is the law enforcement package would be, or center, I should say, the center, law enforcement center will be closed and it'll go to the RMS package in ENCODE. So that's kind of the reason that we don't have a huge timeline to set the system up because we already have it in hand. We're just not utilizing that portion of it. So they just turn the licensing on and add it in. Again, I agree with the sheriff. I was not excited about this thought process. However, if it gets UCR, NIBRIS, all that stuff aligned, keeps us from losing funding, I think the thing that we have to look at is now what are the positives and how do we move forward and what do we, how do we grow with it? And like I said in that IT committee, I think the thing is we just go gung ho for it and try to utilize some of the stuff to hopefully it'll be a little bit more efficient or give them some availability in the field that they may not have had before that might be something that might save a life or might, might be crucial in that moment. I don't know that that's, I don't know if that's a true term, but hopefully that might be. BS, the thing about the one-way push, which is frustrating, this is the biggest integration loss for me, is that Odyssey is a, we used to have a case-based system, which you look at the case and it was all based off of that one case. When they pushed Odyssey, they said, well, this is a party-based system, so no matter if it's a civil case or if it's a criminal case or if it's just, you're just a witness in something, your party is attached to all of this and when you search that party, it links you to all that, which is a great idea. So, when you make an update in Records Management System and the Tyler, the ENCODE product, it will push over to Odyssey. But if they make an update, say, for instance, in the clerk's office, it will not push back to the RMS system. So that's, that's my major concern with it. We are, you know, we're going to have to come up with a process of how to make sure that that's up to date, keep it up to date as best as possible. I do foresee that the majority of changes would come from the sheriff's office into Odyssey versus the other way. But in the same breath, if they make an update and have a new address on somebody and the sheriff's office is looking for that person, I want them to have the most up-to-date information. I mean, that's crucial. So that's, that's the key point that I think needs to be, you know, brought to light. We need to figure out how to make that back compatibility work or in our, make a process for that.
Well, and given that we arguably have had our most successful year in my time with Commissioners Court on grant funding being made available to us, this even becomes a larger issue because of the NIBRIS compliance. It is, they're going to tie all funding to our, for law enforcement and to the county on this NIBRIS compliance. And we have had a very wonderful year when it comes to being successful in our grant awards and we do not need to jeopardize that. And this is at no cost. It is switching out packages, basically.
Sorry. There is an addition to that. We're, they are adding in a product called Brazos, or as Texans say, Brazes. And that product is for ticket writing. Specifically, we had asked about the Fire Marshal's Office because that's how they do their caseload, is through tickets, pushing that to the JP courts, since that's the biggest caseload of tickets, goes to the JPs. And they have agreed to provide us licensing and also some equipment for that. I spoke directly to the sheriff about it. I mean, we've talked about it in length. Tickets for them aren't as crucial as it is the Fire Marshal's Office because that's how they do their business when it comes to public nuisance. So, they are going to add that in. And I didn't want to say the term at no additional cost, but, you know, at some rate, I feel like that, you know, I would have liked to have seen the numbers. We never saw a number set of what it would cost to be in ENCODE versus Odyssey on that, so I don't know that, you know, I don't know that the numbers were fair, honestly, to be straight up with you guys. Because we were looking at timeframe, not as far as dollars on that. I do feel like that they did have to get some approvals to make this happen, so that means to me that there probably was an imbalance on the cost, at least with the Brazes part of it. So, I feel, I do feel like that they gave us some concession on that. And also for licensing, they said that there would not be an issue, they're not going to worry about our Odyssey licensing versus ENCODE licensing, and that's normally where the cost changes come in.
Any other questions or comments?
Just being a completely new format, are they going to supply some training with it also?
Yes, training is, is going to be included in that. And actually, there was a timeline. I want to say that they brought it up in the last session, but I know they did in the discussion that that would also, that was part of that timeline to get to January 1st, is that there would be training to stand up and get everybody ready to go.
Yes, sir. They, they actually, I talked to them after the IT committee meeting, more in depth. And there's basically, it's going to be a three-phase system and we will receive training, virtual training, to get the deputies up to speed, to be able to start just using the system. And then, at the first quarter of next year, there's going to be another push or another conversion-type thing and then we will receive more training on that then. We will have, basically, we'll get what we need and the nuts and bolts for the deadline, virtual, and then they'll come back at the first quarter of next year to finish up the training.
Any other comments? Hearing none, gentlemen, thank you very much for everything. We are at a position, gentlemen, where we have, we need to take action. And though it is not, it was not our desired intention, it has come down to being something that we must do. It's going to be a good product. It's just basically for those of us that sat on the IT committee six, seven, eight years ago when we were implementing Odyssey, this was a hard pill to swallow for us, or me in particular. So, I'm excited about it. It offers all the same packages, inventory, jailing, impounds. It has as much capability as the law enforcement package, but just doesn't have that two-way communication, which we can get around. So, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the contract with ENCODE Public Safety, with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the contract addendum with Tyler Technologies for the ENCODE software package with the justice, with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. The time is now 9:22, and so we will move back up to item number five, which is a public hearing to be held at 9:15 a.m. on posting and regulating no-through trucks on County Road 4614 and no trucks on segments of County Road 4613 and to set truck route on segments of County Road 4613 and County Road 4615, all located in Precinct 4. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your opportunity to speak at the public hearing and we have Mr. Michael Pfeifer, is it, sir? Oh, okay, you asked to speak at this, at this point in time, so if you would, please come forward. And if you would, please give your name and your address for the record. And you have three minutes, once you've done that.
Yes, my name is Michael Pfeifer, P-H-I-F-E-R. Address is 7747 County Road 4613, Athens 75752.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll be brief. When I saw that the agenda item on the calendar for today, made sure that I wanted to come and express my support for the ordinance regarding 4614, 4613, 4615, each, each one of the pieces of that area as it has had signage put up. There already is signage that has indicated the truck route and no trucks and speed limit signs, which we met several years ago on the speed limit signs. And so what I understand today is, is this is in order to come up with an actual ordinance for this that will then be enforceable in some way. Currently, it apparently is not enforceable by, you can't have a sheriff sitting on the road every day waiting for people to drive by, but individuals that live there recognize that it's not being followed 100% of the time. So I'm encouraged by this. The only last part is, is I think it's unfortunate that you all have to even deal with this. There's already signs, there's already, it's already all there and it's just individuals that are not following rules. And everybody's grownups that are driving all of these trucks and that are in this area, there shouldn't be any reason why that should be a concern. Everybody's grown up. They just need to follow the rules. So that's all I had. I just wanted to express that.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer.
Thank you.
It doesn't say at this, on which particular item, but I'm assuming this one. We have Mr. Howard Callaway, sir. We know you well. If you would, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
I live at County Road 4614, 3520. Bits and pieces of that road is only about 10 foot wide. The road cannot support that kind of weight and everything and it's tough to pass a regular vehicle or whatever on that road. And a majority of the trucks that are registered on the road running up and down are 102 inches wide. Like I said, some parts of that road is only 10 foot wide and there's no ditch line to be able to get into. If you get in the ditch, you're not coming out of it. There is a contractor that lives up on, or has a yard up on 4613, where a couple of years ago, the county come in and put Portland concrete into the base and stuff for that road and fixed it for truck route for that very reason in parts of that, that ordinance y'all are talking about. Instead of going up through the neighborhood on the other end of it, breaking it all apart, they had fixed the road where it would hold up and go out to a major truck route. And they come through on County Road 4614, taking shortcut, going out the other way. And it's 35 miles an hour on that road with all the kids and dogs and animals and everything. And the width of it is, is kind of stretching it, but they all come through, you know, exceeding, you know, that 35 mile an hour speed limit. I understand that maybe the county don't, hasn't dealt with this kind of ordinance or whatever throughout. I think it would be a good deal for all of the precincts as they redo these roads and everything and they're coming through putting this concrete on, to be able to designate it, you know, road route for trucks and stuff like this, so it doesn't, you know, tear up the rest of the roads and everything, because it's costly, you know. Back then, some of the bases that's put on these roads are not as good as, you know, the products and stuff that we have today put on. But I'd, I'd like for your support in this, in the safety and well-being of the residents out there.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? I'll call one last time. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the item we're having for public hearing? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to close public hearing.
Second, Judge.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Thule, to close public hearing. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously and public hearing is closed at 9:28. Item six, consider and take action on an ordinance imposing through truck restrictions on County Road 4614 and segments of County Road 4613 located in Precinct 4. Commissioner Richardson, would you like to speak to this item?
Yeah, pardon, Judge. We're on a motion to put an ordinance for the county on County Road 4614, section of County Road 46, in Precinct 4. Put this in place that way. Home, put it all up. Put it, put it in enforcement.
Okay. We have our county attorney with us, if you would, sir, speaking to the requirements and is the need imposing this?
It sits out and defines what we're going to consider a truck, so it's all in place unless you have a question. Based on comments, one thing I did want to mention, because I know Howard mentioned that there is one trucking company. So, the no-through trucks ordinance would only apply to trucks going to or coming from a destination that's able to be reached by using some other road, 4613 and 4614. So, if there were somebody that lived on 4613, 4614, that had a yard there, that owned a house there, that was going to a destination, if you're delivering gravel to somebody driving a 4613 and 4614, that is permissible. You have to be going to or coming from a destination that's not accessible by one of these two roads and for the road to do that.
Questions for our county attorney? All right. Or any other comments? Entertain a motion. Entertaining motion?
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with the judge's authority.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve an ordinance. I think that's correct. Ordinance imposing through truck restrictions on County Road 4614 and sections of County Road 4613 located in Precinct 4. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item number seven is consider and take action on posting and regulating no-through trucks on County Road 4614 and no trucks on segments of County Road 4613. Set truck route on segments of County Road 4613 and County Road 4615 located in Precinct 4. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, we, ordinance we've passed, we're saying, the sections of the road that are being restricted with trucks. We no-through trucks on County Road 4614, we no-through trucks on sections of 4613, and actually from the, down to the highway avenue, this thing, 1.45 miles, heading south will be the no-through truck area. And the truck route will actually lead through the 1.45 miles, Harper, out to 4563, and I mean, Highway 93, and all other routes will be restricted.
Commissioner, those are depicted in the map, in the backup?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Commissioner?
The route highlighted in yellow is a two-truck route.
Okay. And that's on County Road 46?
13.
13, okay.
4613, it's here, it's in Athens.
Any questions or comments?
I was just going to make sure that what the county attorney said, if somebody was having a rock haul to their driveway or construction on some part of their property and it was on a different section of this road, that would have no effect on this one.
That's correct, it would not.
Any other comments? Entertaining motion?
Judge, I'd like to make a motion. With the front route on County Road 4613 and 4613, and no-through trucks on County Road 4613, they're saying 4613, that's the end. With the committee of operations, I'm.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the motion with Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. I believe we're now back up to item 11, which is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits, which we have none presented today. Item 12 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Lee?
Yes, at that time of year, I had some amendments that needed to be addressed.
Gentlemen, you have any questions concerning the budget amendments?
No questions, Judge.
Hearing, sir?
I move that we approve the budget amendment.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 13, consider and take action on payment of bills, and we have two sets of them this week. Ms. Maple, how are you?
I'm good, sir.
What do you have for us?
Miss, for 2020, I have $238,535.28.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
No, no, Judge, I have no questions.
Commissioner Thule?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No question, Judge.
All right, entertain a motion.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bills for 2020 in the amount of $238,535.28 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the 2020 bills in the amount of $238,535.28. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously.
Okay, yes, this week I also have some bills for 2021, and they totaled $247,698.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Thule?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No question, Judge.
For the public, we'll state that this includes a good portion of our 2021 insurance, is why this is so high coming into the first year. $238,000 of it is insurance premiums. So, or any further comments? Entertaining motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve the fiscal year 2021 bills in the amount of $247,698. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item 15 is open and consider bids, but we have none of those today. Commissioner Richardson, we'll get the information out to you so that we can get your signature on everything here in the, today or tomorrow.
Okay, sir. My unit has flats on it.
I skipped right over flats, didn't I? That's not surprising.
Pinnacle Club Phase 2, Section G, and it's taking lots 10 and 11, creating a new lot 10-R.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertaining motion?
Our move that we accept the replat of the Pinnacle Club Phase 2, Section G of lots 10 and 11, creating lot 10-R for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the replat in the Pinnacle Club Phase 2, Section G, replating lots 10 and 11 into lot 10R for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Item 16, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously, and thank you very much for being here with us.